Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 27th City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have a roll call real quick.
Here's that.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Marsette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Here.
Watson.
Okay, next, a little over a week ago, the American Legion celebrated their 100th anniversary in town. In honor of that, tonight they're here, they're going to do a flag folding ceremony for us and read to us what it means for the flag folding ceremony. So, I'd like to welcome the American Legion.
Thank you. You might have thought that the symbolism of the 13 folds of the American flag was symbolic of the original 13 colonies. Here is the one story that is dear to many veterans and their families. It may not be only version, you'll hear some that may have slightly different wording. The first fold of the flag is a symbol of life. The second fold is a symbol of our belief in eternal life. The third fold is made in honor and remembrance of the veterans departing our ranks, who gave a portion of their lives for the defense of our country to attain peace throughout the world. The fourth fold represents our weaker nature. For as American citizens, trusting in God, it is to Him we turn in times of peace, as well as in times of war, for His divine guidance. The fifth fold is a tribute to our country. For it is in the words of Stephen Decanter, "Our country is..." Excuse me, "is dealing with other countries, may she always be right, but it is still our country, right or wrong." The sixth fold is where our hearts lie. It is with our hearts that we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The seventh fold is a tribute to our armed forces. For it is through the armed forces that we protect our country and our flag against all her enemies, whether they are found within or without the boundaries of our republic. The eighth fold is a tribute to the one who entered into the valley of the shadow of death, that we might see the light of day. The ninth fold is a tribute to womanhood and mothers. For it has been through their faith, their love, loyalty, and devotion that the character of the men and women who have made this country great has been modeled. The tenth fold is a tribute to the Father. For He too has given His sons and daughters for defense of our country since they were first born. The eleventh fold represents the lower portion of the seal of King David and King Solomon and glorifies in the Hebrews the eyes of God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. The twelfth fold represents the emblem of eternity and glorifies in the Christian's eyes, God the Father, the Son, and Holy Spirit. The thirteenth fold, when the flag is completely folded, the stars are uppermost, reminding us of our nation's motto, "In God we trust." After the flag is completely folded and tucked in, it takes on the appearance of a cocked hat, ever reminding us of the soldiers who served under General George Washington and the sailors and Marines who served under Captain John Paul Jones, who were followed by their comrades and shipmates in the armed forces of the United States, preserving for us the rights, privileges, and freedoms we enjoy today. The next time you see the flag ceremony honoring someone that has served our country, either in the armed forces or in our civilian services such as the police force or fire department, keep in mind all of the important reasons behind each and every movement. They have paid the ultimate sacrifice for all of us.
I'd like to take a second just to encourage any veterans out there who are not currently members of the Legion to please stop out and talk to them and become members and become part of the great job they do out there. So, thanks again, guys, we appreciate it. Okay, next, we'll go on to approval of minutes from the August 13th regular and workshop minutes.
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, we have approval of the bills with Mr. Marsette.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move approval of the bills in the amount of $583,437.33, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, we move into public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything to stand up and talk about? Yeah, come on up and sign in and your name and...
Good evening, I'm William Hanson, Town of River Falls. I'm a little bit awed to follow the flag ceremony with my speech, that was very impressive. I thank the veterans for their, all their work and for their performance tonight. And I thank you for the opportunity to share some thoughts with you this evening. Over half the coal, half the energy we currently use is sourced from burning coal. The conversion rate of burning coal is about a pound of coal is burned per each kilowatt hour of electricity that we generate. When we burn a pound of coal, we generate almost 1.9 pounds of CO2 into the air. We generate almost half a pound of ash, which ends up in landfill or in waterways. Coal combustion waste can include things such as arsenic, cadmium, chromium, cobalt, lead, mercury, selenium, thorium, uranium, as well as dioxins, polyaromatics, and hydrocarbons. Sourcing renewable energy, whether from solar, wind, or hydro, eliminates the CO2 and solid waste pollution from producing the same amount of power by burning coal. Please consider expansion of the River Falls City Government's purchase of clean renewable energy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Okay, anybody else?
Hello, my name is Ben Fox, 2529 Powell Avenue. Previously, I lived at 1457 Wildcat Court on east side of River Falls. I want to make a comment or bring up some points on item number seven, rezoning of future land use map. Part of the city's initiatives are, you know, to expand affordable housing, infill development, and a bunch of other items. But, one of these things is that this site is probably not the best point for a convenience store. It is very inaccessible and highly trafficked. And so, before any rezoning, I think there should be more into the traffic and accessibility to the site before the final things because, I mean, it's in between two roundabouts with not a lot of access there already, so you can easily back up on 65. I've had a lot of times where I'm sitting there on east side of our southwest corner of River Falls, thinking, "God, I gotta go get gas." But I gotta go to Ellsworth, so I gotta drive all the way back into town. So, having a convenience store on the east side would be great. But I don't think this site is well-suited. And it's also, I think, has plaits for multifamily housing and stuff, which the utilities have put pipes and everything else in the ground. So, I just don't think that that's a great site for that type of convenience, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to Police and Fire Commission. We have a presentation tonight, and Mr. Sambs will be giving us a presentation. Who sits on the commission?
There we go. Well, again, my name is Mark Sambs and President of Police and Fire Commission. And with the help of Chief Young and Nelson, we prepared this presentation. This year, we had, these officers were new in 2018. And the 2018 firefighter of the year there, Justin Wilson. And Police and Fire Commission members, myself, Grant Hanson, Richard Reinhardt, and Dick right here, Randy Zimmerman, and John Longstorf. The commission consists of five citizens from River Falls. And the mayor basically is set to appoint one of us each year. Sometimes, we don't serve our full term, so sometimes he gets to do more than one. But, we have a, our terms are five years, and you can see there when our terms expire. We basically have just these items to conduct as business, as part of our responsibilities, is to appoint a police chief and a fire chief, approve the appointment of subordinates. And that would be just the sworn officers, which, on the fire department, that'd just be the police chief presently. If we, under the reorganization, we may have a deputy chief, which would probably be a sworn officer as well. And of course, all the police, the police chief and the police officers. And then, to address any discipline areas that might come up. We used to meet on a pretty regular basis, now we just meet as need be. So, you know, so far this year, we've had two meetings. We're scheduled to have an additional meeting in early September. We have two officers on the, on the commission, the president and vice president. Right now, I'm the president and Randy Zimmerman is the vice president. In order to have a meeting count, we have to have a quorum of three members. And then, we have an agenda. And the secretary duties are split between city clerk or the designee, which generally has been a lean who's with the police force. If we have a need for any kind of legal help, of course, then the city attorney would help us. If we have a disciplinary issue, the individual affected could appeal the decision. And the commission can also initiate a review. This is just an example of how things are handled, I guess. Police chief requests a candidate to be promoted. And then, he would do, provide the criteria for that, which is set up by the commission. That is approved by the commission. Primarily, the police chief prepares that information, and then we review it and approve it. And so, in the case of a police sergeant promotion, the candidates would have to attain a grade C2 status, which is approximately three and a half years of experience. Take a written test. The top five candidates would have, that scored above 70% would be invited to have an oral interview. And then, the duration for that list would be six months. Chief then would select from the top three, and then approved by the Police and Fire Commission. Police officer hiring, we basically have a eligibility list that is unending. So, we generally have about, we try to have as many as 10 on that eligibility list. Sometimes, we aren't able to get quite 10, but that process is similar, but not quite as intense. After we have the oral board, the top three have been, would be selected for a background investigation. And then, after that's done, the chief would make a choice of the, of the person that he suggests. And then, that'd be approved by the Police and Fire Commission. And then, a conditional offer would be provided. And then, they would have to take a medical exam, drug screen, and psychological evaluation. Do they have any questions about anything that the commission does, how we perform, anything like that?
Anything?
No.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Sambs, appreciate it. Okay, next, we're gonna close the council hearing and open up a public hearing for a request for a combination Class B liquor and Class B beer license from Michelle Marr doing business as Falls Theater. Does anybody in the audience has anything to say about this? No? No, unless you want to, you don't have to. You bet. Okay, so, we will close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing. And I will accept a motion for this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the request for the combination Class B liquor and Class B beer license, assuming the application's in order with a clerk, for the Falls Theater.
Aye, second.
Questions or comments?
As she's already an agent and answered my three questions that are burning in every agent's mind, I'm sure, every night, I won't have to ask those questions tonight.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, move on to the consent agenda. We'll have the acknowledgement of the following minutes. The EMS board from 6:3, the park and advisory, recreation advisory board from 7:17, the planning commission from 5:7, 6:18, and 7:16, the historical preservation commission from 7:10, utility advisory board from 7:15, and the west central Wisconsin BioSolids Facility Commission from 6:20. Next is a resolution approving application for exemption from the county library tax. This exemption is allowed if the local tax contribution is higher than the amount that would be calculated by the county. And the last one is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Kinney Corridor Collaborative Incorporated. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull, I have consent agenda item number six.
Anything else? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent agenda items four A through F and five.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Downing pulled number six.
Resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Kinney Corridor Collaborative Incorporated. I was just curious about...
Oh, I'm sorry.
The consistency with the city's resolution, and I was wondering if Scott Simpson could speak to that.
Sure, I think Resolution 6234, which was passed by the city council on February 2018, is the basis of a number of the phrasing and the performances within the MOU. So, it suggests that we've kind of not only woven it in, but it's, it's kind of fundamental to the, to the architecture of the MOU. So, that the two parties are, were using that as a basis, as well as the, the mission and the goals of the Kinney Corridor Plan itself, and the adopted plan. So, this is a 10-year, you know, proceeds a 10-year agreement with some renewals available by each, by the parties going forward. The resolution, or the MOU, I'm sorry, has references to the resolution right off the bat. You know, it's the first, first part of our resolution for the council tonight, but it's also a part, the recital number A in the MOU. So, I think it's, it's very consistent with the resolution that was passed by the council.
And it meets the expectational goals of the Kinney Corridor Committee as well, then?
Yeah, I think this was, you know, this was an opportunity to work with, directly with a board that is missioned to implement the plan. So, it allowed us to do a little bit, create a little bit more finite detail. But I would suggest that it's still an MOU, so it's, it's only providing a little bit of additional detail onto the resolution. And it calls for project agreements on specific projects within the corridor. And I think that will, again, give an opportunity to do more detail work.
Would you describe this as a phasing plan, then?
Yeah, I'm not sure, definition of a phasing plan, but essentially, this is a pathway for us to, to put the plan in action. So, to the extent that that's what you mean by a phasing plan, I think it gives us a step, a big step forward towards what we see as the first 10 years of the plan, which are called out in kind of the resolution and the action, action steps in the Kinney, Kinney Plan. So, this doesn't get us the entire plan implemented, but it gets the low, addresses essentially the lower removal, the restoration, and some associated projects that would be chosen by the community to go forward with in what I'd consider initial, initial phases.
All right. Yeah, I like the fact that it's broken up, I can kind of see it happening, and I like the direction it's going. With that, I move approval for consent agenda item number six.
Mayor, can I ask a question too, on this topic?
I'll, here, hang on.
I'll, I'll second the motion, so we can have discussion.
Yep, there you go.
Sorry, interrupted. Page 40, item number eight, it says, "Coal leader, our responsibility is coal leader for third-party funding and fiscal agent when required." I'm just kind of wondering, what is that, what are we agreeing to do there?
What we're trying to do is recognize that we're not telling the Kinney Collaborative, "You just have to go out and get everything and deal with all these third parties, and only you." That there's gonna be some co-work with them. The fiscal agent part specifically addresses what we know to be the case, which is a number of the federal resources in particular are gonna require the city to be the grant recipient.
Okay.
So, even if the Kinney Collaborative is successful in making the case, putting together a case statement, getting a grant, they won't necessarily be able to receive those grants. So, what a fiscal agent means is, we're agreeing that if they do all that work, it's within the scope of what we talked about, we then will receive those funds and kind of make sure they get put to use.
Got it, understood.
Well, a comment, if I could, and in general, I'm in support of the memorandum, I think so. But, I, I am a little, I'm a little troubled by the fact that we call out the dam stuff specifically. The Kinney Corridor Collaborative, in my mind, is meant for the whole corridor, not just the dams. So, I just want to make that statement and, and hold that task to the committee, that it is more than just the dams. You know, I think B and C for sure call out specific dam things. And I just want to make sure that we're keeping a broader focus on the whole corridor, not just the dam removal. I realize that's a big piece of it, we're in the middle of that right now with the relicensing and everything else, but just want everybody to keep their eyes on the whole corridor. Thank you.
Anything else, y'all?
When you look at page 47 of the memorandum of understanding, which is also 47 of our packet, item D, it says, "If disagreements arise which cannot be settled through cooperative means and dialogue, this MOU may be terminated by either party within 60 days," which I, I don't have a problem with that. The only, I'm generally in favor of this as well. I, I do second Scott's sentiments as well. This isn't a dam project, it's a Kinney Corridor project, right? So, back to what I was getting at here, is under that 60-day termination, the last part of that paragraph, it says, "Kinney CC is not obligated to transfer its operating funds or assets to the city at MOU termination." And just before that, it talks about, if either party initiates a termination of MOU, obligation of donors and creditors will be resolved between the city and the Kinney. I would expect if there was obligations made in an LOA, that any creditors or debtors that would be in them LOAs or any kind of agreements would be met with funds that are mutually agreed upon. So, I, I think that's a general sentiment, is it not, Scott?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's how I understand it to operate, is the LOAs would be... Conceivably, you could have an LOA on a project, but yet, the two groups decide they aren't gonna continue with the MOU. The, the party's obligations under the LOAs are still, the letters of agreement, or the, basically, the project contracts are still gonna exist. So, if we say, if there's an agreement that we're going to raise funds and do the pedestrian walkway across the corridor, and it's X million dollars, and the Kinney Collaborative is gonna raise this amount, and the city is gonna contribute X, Y, and Z for engineering help or other things, and we'll accept a grant from this, from the state, that could outlive any termination of the MOU. So, I think that's what your, your question for clarification is, is we're gonna have some, some agreements, sub-agreements and other things, probably a number of them throughout this progress, process, so...
So, if a donor comes forward and agrees to give a million dollars for a project, let's just say, and the, we do a termination of agreements, and they've agreed that with them and brought it back to us, any of those funds that were designated previously would be returned to those donors?
Yeah, I mean, I would expect that both a donor... Yeah, I mean, I would expect that, that both a donor agreement and the LOA would have-
Writing of the-
Have triggers for that kind of situation.
Right, so it wouldn't necessarily just be one side or the other on the hook for that, it would be-
Yeah, and the language, I think that you're talking about in there, I think the only clarification we're making there is if the Kinney collaborative raises operating funds, undesignated, un, um, unencumbered funds for the operations of their, um, their 501-3C, that they are not an entity of the city. So if they, if they fold, it doesn't mean that the city just kinda gobbles up the assets and, and has what's left. There's, there, we're indicating that they have some separate identity, and that if, if we decide we can't work together, that doesn't mean we just take all their assets.
Right, so if they do fold, um, hope, hope you guys don't, I hope you're very successful, and I hope this mutual agreement goes a long way, right? But let's just say they do fold, they raise, let's just say, a hundred grand, and they fold, do them general fund revenue that they take in, does that go back to the donors?
They depend on their agreement with the donors, and, and we're gonna, it's, it's likely to evolve, but-
Just some clarification for me, so.
Most sophisticated donors are gonna require an agreement with the parties, so they, there may be some three-party agreements that have the Kinney collaborative and the city as, and a donor, there may be agreements that are just with the collaborative and the donor, and there may be agreements where the donor says, I was introduced by the, to the project by the collaborative, but I only wanna work with the city, I want the city treasurer to have the money. So it'll, it'll depend on the donor's wishes, I think, in the project that we're doing.
Sounds great, thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Otherwise, I got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, ordinance resolution. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash zero nine, to amend the official zoning map and future land use map of the city to rezone fifteen twenty through fifteen seven, seventy of Cemetery Road, from multifamily high-density to highway commercial. The second reading will be September tenth. Any council members have any questions?
Looks good.
Okay. Next, move on to a resolution approving the final plat for Highview Meadows fifth edition. Now, I entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the resolution for the final plat for Highview Meadows five.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I have a quick question. Um, I know I had looked at this before, but I remember in my district that there were water pressure problems back in that part of it. What guarantees do we have that there will be a quality inspection or follow-through for all the buildings in this new final plat? Scott, could you answer that?
Yeah, I can, I'll answer it a little bit and see if that's where you're headed, or if you need some more detail, but before any public improvements are accepted, so the water mains themselves are accepted, they go through and it's, they have to be certified, inspected, um, before we would accept them. As far as the services to each of the buildings, and obviously, they would follow plumbing code, and there would be, um, part of the building permit inspection process. Does that guarantee a specific pressure? I would say it does not. We don't, I'm not aware that we have anything in our ordinance, is that when they do a final inspection of a house, that they're certifying, um, to that level of detail, but certainly on the main, they're gonna do some pressure testing, the chlorination and other things, to try to, um, make sure the system was constructed as it was designed. Ultimately, some of the pressure issues on there are on the city and their design of the system, so if the developer builds the pipe at the right size and elevation, and with the number of connections that's shown, then it's really on the city's designers as far as the ultimate pressure there. So, so yes, we do a number of inspections, both on the main and on individual services, but I don't believe that I could say with definitive, definitive answer that each one of those houses is gonna have a kinda verified water pressure.
Will the recent improvements to the city help deal with some of that, um, potential problem?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's been investments there, and things that have come online in the last ten years that have impacted the ability for us to have better consistency. There was changes to the well itself, and some of the, I guess it's a simplified way to say, some water hammer issues, some industrial-sized water hammer issues, um, so there's, there's both low-pressure and high-pressure issues, depending on what part of the city you're in with soils, how close they are to water towers, when a well comes on or off. So, so we've done variable-speed drives, we've, we've made some, um, additional connections between booster stations, wells, and other neighborhoods, so I don't believe that there, I don't believe we're anticipating any pressure problems in Highview Meadows. We have some other neighborhoods, like Sterling Ponds, as they come on, that we're being a lot more vigilant about how does it come on and what the pressures, um, not so much for domestic pressures, because we're, our concern isn't necessarily that you can water your whole lawn with one sprinkler, um, but it's the fire, it's fire flows and pressures for firefighting activities. So, some neighborhoods are just gonna have a little bit better ease of sprinkling their lawns, but we're, we're focused primarily on domestic health, welfare, and safety, so being able to do the sanitation well and fire flows.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Just a quick clarification, Crystal and/or Jeff or Matt, if, the letter of credit is been received, or you're ready to present it, Jeff, for final plat to be recorded?
Uh, we are working on the letter of credit amount right now, um, we anticipate by the end of the week, we'll have it.
Okay, great, but you, you-
Yep.
You guys are coming to some agreement.
Yep.
Okay, and you don't have a problem with that, Jeff? Good, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, got a first and a second, I will, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, move on to administrator's report. If anybody has any questions for Scott?
While you're thinking it over, you have a number of things. I just wanna mention to the council and the community, as, as people know, school starts soon, it can't start soon enough from some, for some households, I'm sure. So within the next week, we're gonna see a number of waves of different students of all ages coming into the community. So as we always would do and expect the community to do, we'd like to welcome those students back. It's part of our strategic plan and our mission and vision as a city, is to be a place where students can thrive. And so, remember to be alert. There's a lot of new people that don't know exactly where they're going, um, both college students, but there's all kinds of students within our, um, public school systems, private school systems, where they're in different buildings than they've been in before, their parents are driving to different places than they've driven before, drop-off points have been changed in a number of schools, the schools, most of them are still actively under construction and will be through December at least. So, if we can do anything to help, um, safety, it would just be to slow down and be a lot more alert than you normally are in your routine of getting up and going to work and just kinda doing your thing. Now, as, the next few weeks are really important, without getting too preachy here, to just take your time and understand that everybody doesn't know exactly where they're going, or hasn't gone in that, that pattern for a while. So, new student move-in is August thirty-first for UWRF. The first day for secondary students is September third, the first day for elementary and the RF-4C program is September fourth. That is also the first day of classes for UWRF students, so there'll be changes in the pedestrian traffic and other things along Cascade. I, I suggest often to people, if you don't have a reason to be on Cascade-
You should be on Cascade.
It's a good time to change some of your driving habits, too, if you're River Falls resident, and you've been enjoying that quick trip through Cascade to get to wherever. If you don't need to be, if you don't have a purpose to be on Cascade, it's a good, good street to avoid, as we're adding quite a bit of pedestrian traffic. Residential parking also comes with that, so that system begins September first. Residential parking permit system, as people know, runs the school year, so September first twenty nineteen to May thirty-first of twenty twenty. There is a number of residential zones, including a few that have been added over the last five years. The permits are obtained in the River Falls Police Department. You do need proof of residency, according to the municipal code, to get those permits, and so the police department will be happy to help coordinate what you need. The city offices will be closed Labor Day, the library is closed for the weekend of Labor Day. The rodeo is coming to town in Art in Kinney, so right off the bat, we continue with our visitor series, so not only do we have lots of students, but we'll have a number of visitors for the rodeo and for the Art on the Kinney. Just a couple mentions on things that were on the agenda that didn't get a lot of talk, the library tax certification, make mention that this is a process, in Wisconsin, you have a right to go into a library, it's part of our, our, um, constitution statutes, and so, one of the things that was put in by, um, the state in order to try to make the funding of those libraries that you have a right to enter, is to try to find a way to make sure that some places are not paying a lot less to support their library than others. So there's a, there's a minimum amount of funding that's required by cities and villages that operate their library. If you, if you meet that, you're exempt from the county levy, the county then levies to all communities that do not have libraries, for those folks to help pay for the communities that are, are providing libraries. And as, as we mentioned in the packet tonight, we fund our library quite a bit higher than the minimum required to do, and we're proud to do that. But just a little Wisconsin education for those that are new to Wisconsin, that, that's kinda how libraries get funded here. Had the opportunity with a number of you to, to attend the fire department badging ceremony yesterday, and I just wanna extend my thank you to the, um, the fire chief for his work in, in what was a big task, and also the members of the department who kinda took that upon themselves to, um, to design what the future of that department is gonna look like. Lots of proud, proud family members there, and I really appreciate the service that they give to the community, so I'd be happy to take any questions.
Just a quick comment, if I could, back to the, to the school, the, the population of the school and, and what's going on there. I had a conversation with the principal at the high school, and at the high school, he has seventy-five new students this year coming into town. Now, I don't think that equates to seventy-five new families, as there's probably kids in various grade levels, but first of all, welcome to those people coming to town, and second of all, it, I think it kinda supports what you're talking about with a lot of new people going in different directions, be welcoming to them when they, when you find out they're new to town, and, you know, be safe.
Anybody else got anything? Okay, we'll move on to comptroller's report.
This is the comptroller's report for July twenty nineteen. The general fund revenues through the end of July were five million eight hundred and seventy-three thousand and thirty-seven dollars, or fifty-four percent of revenues. Revenues in the month of July include four hundred and ten thousand eight, two hundred and eight dollars in shared revenues, Wisconsin state aid, one hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars in transportation aids, and one hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and seven dollars in lottery credits. Expenditures for the same period were five million three hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars, or forty-nine percent of expenses, for a net of revenues over expenditures of five hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars.
Thanks, Diane. Okay, next, we recess in a closed session, per Wisconsin state statutes nineteen point eight five, one E for the following purposes, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. To wit, seven sixteen North Main Street.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to move into closed session.
Second.
Christie, come up. Go call.
Aye, or yes, excuse me. Yes?
Gagne.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Okay, we are in closed session.